Ready, ready?
Yep.
Right, ready? We'll call this meeting to the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for January 18th, 2022, roll call vote, Mr. Beaker.
Leland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Velka?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as a proposal is amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved to the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public have anything other than what's on the agenda? Anybody online? Hearing none. Claims and payments?
This week's expenditures total $421,873.35. The departments that make that up, the larger ones are secondary roads, $30,375, maintenance department, $26,313, and the sheriff's department, $167,642. Everything looked normal.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved to the second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is Sheriff Thompson with the presentation on our 2021 Sheriff's Office Annual Report. Morning, Tony.
Good morning. I emailed you the PDF, and really, this is becoming so graphics intensive that it's not really something that I should be printing off every year. So the PDF is really, it's intended for dissemination via the website and things of that nature. It's a 20-page report. This year was kind of unique in that we had a marketing UNI student with us this summer as an intern, and we had him working on several projects, part of which was recruitment. And I threw him this bone, just kind of as a side project. He laid the shell for the annual report and spoke with him. He's up in Minneapolis right now as a finalist for a marketing job out in Eden Prairie, so we hope he gets that job. But he kind of had the layout and design of this year's annual report. So Nolan, congratulations. Thank you for the extra work.
Yeah.
The numbers kind of speak for themselves. This is a bit of a bounce-back year for us after COVID shut so much down last year. Our numbers total, when you look at Part 1 and 2 UCR numbers, there's a natural ebb and flow that we see year to year. However, when you look at our numbers, we went from 816 last year to 1,051 this year. But that 1,051 is a little misleading in that OWI enforcement, narcotics enforcement, you can inflate artificially those numbers year to year based on where you put emphasis, right? Burglaries, thefts, things like that, you're just simply responding to for the most part. But when you get down in the weeds and you start working narcotics violation cases, you start building informants, you start doing surveillance, trash rips, setting up on drug houses, that kind of stuff, and start building cases, you start artificially increasing those numbers with arrests, with incidents, with cases worked, that kind of thing. When you go out and you start intentionally working OWI enforcements, and you see that we went from 214 OWI arrests last year to 302 this year, we've got a second and a third shift staff that are very, very intent on keeping our roadway safe. We're not apologizing for that, obviously. We hate to see our UCR reportable offenses go up, but I don't want the public to see that and say, oh, my gosh, Blackhawk County is getting more dangerous, because quite frankly, crimes against our citizens are dropping. And it's because we are intentionally deploying in such a way that when we work drug crime, for example, we see thefts and burglaries and things like that start to reduce. And it takes a little time for that to happen, but we know that they're not robbing you of your craftsman tools because they covet your tools. They're being able to trade them for drugs or sell them to be able to buy drugs and that kind of thing. So we see that trickle-down effect, and it's nice to see an aggressive, younger patrol staff out there making those kinds of things happen. The other unfortunates, jail bookings. You know, we've talked about ARPA funds and the need for more beds. This year, our average daily population was 262. At anything over 260 folks were full. 272 is our maximum population. So that is no more room in the end. We budget $100,000 out of county, and we are spending that. We are holding more forcible felons than we have ever held. You've heard me say that about every year, but this continues to be true because we dilute that population. The judges and the county attorney will not hold a misdemeanor offender anymore. There's no more Otis's that check themselves in on the weekends. We aren't able to hold time servers right now. We just, they get these minimuses to serve 30 days in the Blackhawk County jail, and we can't facilitate it right now because our jail is completely full of forcible felons. It's bad that we have shooters and stabbers and rapists out there committing crime. It's great that we're catching them, but their heads stay in our beds for a lot longer period of time because it takes forever to get them through the court system right now because of COVID. So the density of our population, particularly with forcible offenders, is pretty dramatic. Everything else looks pretty well business as usual. Our property damage accidents are up, our injury accidents are up, our fatalities were slightly up. Again, we had a little more bad weather last year than we've had in years past. Our arrests were up, our total calls for service were up, so more demand on our services. But all in all, it was a very challenging year, but it was a productive year and a year that I'm very, very proud of the staff that we have. We were operating almost the entire year at 10% down staffing, and that's attributable to just a difficult. Nobody wants to be a cop right now. So it's challenging to get hiring. We're not the only ones in that boat. Every law enforcement agency across the state, everybody is, everybody is. So it's hard to get them, even just as hard to keep them. We talked about that in prior meetings. And so when you've got a staff that's having to respond to those kind of numbers and do it with 10% less staff than they've ever had to at those long periods of time, it was a challenging year. So we're proud of the work that they've done, and we look forward to getting the heck out of 2021 and into a quieter, calmer 2022, knock on wood. Any questions for me?
Are we currently at 10% then still?
We're still 10% down. Well, no, we're actually, I am down 10 bodies right now, so we're a little less than 10% down right now. Yep. And we're hiring just as fast as we can get them through the chute.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tony.
Don't worry. It's a good report, good work for the student, the intern.
Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Where, Ryan?
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. I've shared crews route a couple times over the weekend, clearing some snow from Friday's snow event. Most of the work this week is going to be getting trucks and stuff cleaned up and mixing more salt and sand. Our bridge crew is also in the shop on one of our bridge decks for construction next year. Any questions you guys have for me?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great to see you.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none. We'll move on to minutes approved for January 11th and January 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. We have a hearing at 9:05 on resumee request by Mark Becker. That'll be coming up, Mark.
Not yet.
Yep. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at Title 6 agreement between Blackhawk County and Iowa Department of Transportation, naming Amanda Fesmire the county human resource director as the designated Title 6 coordinator to be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. Discussion. Ryan, Ryan?
Both these next couple items are just yearly agreements we have between us and the DOT. They are there in place as part of us receiving federal funds for projects. So if you have any questions?
Any questions from anyone? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution at the Title 6 assurance between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation stating that Blackhawk County complied with the following statutory regulatory authorities: Title 6, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and in order, receive federal financial assistance from the United States Department of Transportation be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the seconding. Ryan, anything you want to add to this?
You guys have any other questions? I would be.
No, it's pretty self-explanatory. Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Velka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is the resolution at the 2080 agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Raymond defining winter maintenance activities, shoulder maintenance, and the bridge inspection on portions of South Raymond Road and Dubuque Road for a sum of $2,500 be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. Discussion. Ryan, anything on this?
This is just an update to our 2080 agreement with the City of Raymond. We do snow removal and salt sand placement or brine placement along Dubuque and Raymond Road. We also do the bridge inspection for them, for the culvert on Raymond Road just south of Dubuque. There is an increase in the cost for some of that, and we did address that in this agreement. So it is an increase in the reimbursement we're requesting for the snow and ice removal for these agreements.
Any questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. 10A, this is a resolution at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Al U, IT Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase a help desk ticketing system for $10,890 for managed engine. Al?
Hi, Board. Al U, IT Director. This request for purchase is for the ticketing system that will help us better serve the staff and citizens of Blackhawk County. Any questions for me?
No, I think you noted in your email it was budgeted previously, so everything in there. No? Approved for the agenda. I mean, approve. Make a motion to approve.
Moved to the seconded. Any further discussion?
Is this the ARC money?
This is previously budgeted.
Oh, this was last year's budget.
Any other questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Did I get a motion?
Yes, Linda, nice, nice second.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Velka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion to finance director to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed Blackhawk County budget for fiscal year '22, '23 to be held on February 8, 2022 at 9:05 in Boardroom 201 of Blackhawk County Courthouse, Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Yeah, yeah.
Moved to the second. Any further discussion?
I would like to have a little discussion on this. James and I had talked about this last week, right? I contacted him on Friday, I think it was, and mentioned how the, I was still having pains over the budget just because we were taking this decrease and something, you know, that we'd been working on for several years to try to be as consistent as we could be with the budget. And then he answered me with, you know, his response on some of the things that had occurred as far as the loss of the mental health levy, which was a tremendous difference from that levy, and helped me, James, if I don't remember some of them, but that we had done some shifting of some items from the secondary roads into the capital budget. And let me see if, trying to think, there was some other things that you pointed out to me as well. And so, and I appreciated his response to me, but I said, I was, I thought the three-day weekend was going to be good. Let's all take a breath. And then I said to him this morning, I didn't take a breath. I couldn't, I just kept going over it and over it in my mind that, you know, we've worked for so many years to keep that levy consistent and to keep the taxpayers from having to be on this roller coaster ride or, you know, hills and valleys and that type of thing that we talked about. And I just think while we may have done the best job we can, I was wanting his opinions or thoughts if there, maybe we shouldn't look at a couple of additional scenarios, just if there wasn't something more we could do to reduce the drastic decline that we did or we're doing now. And just to share a little bit of information, I guess, that when I looked back at this over the weekend, you know, some of the things that we have done since probably, it looks like 2013, maybe even 2012, where we've been staying in that 624, 602, 612, 619, 618, 617. So we've been holding very good and very steady. We did have the year with Country View, which we had operating losses in that, so that was an increased year for us. But even following that, looking at the numbers we had without radio debt and things like that included, we were staying at 630, 634. And last year, I believe, James, correct me if I'm wrong, was 638. So I just thought we've been, like I say, everybody, staff and us have worked very good trying to do that. But then, and I'm sorry, you know, for those, like, online, I just was going to show, just because the visual helped me, but to go from where we were at 638 to drop so drastically to 558, and then the fact that we haven't been anything nearly so low. And I said to James today, we haven't since fiscal year 11 ever been that low. I don't know when the last time was we were that low, but I just wondered if there wasn't something we should, could look at. And I said, I'm not sure it would change us that much, but maybe if we looked at a couple of scenarios, if there wasn't something we could do to not have it be such a drastic decline so that we don't have to make that up in previous years. I know we've talked, he and I too, about, you know, we have reserves that we know could help us for that, and we all, I think, probably are in agreement that it's a considerable amount that we would like to see reduced and helping to work on that over the years. But it just, that was really where I was coming, I guess, from this and just asking if we couldn't hit a pause button, or maybe the whole board doesn't want to do that, but I wanted to bring that up, that just until we could see some scenarios on that, just to make sure we were looking. James, maybe you want to address it because he talked about this morning, too. The items we would be looking at would only be capital items that we would even be considering, but if there weren't some things like that, we should put in here and try to make it not such a drastic change for us, but.
You know, and, yeah, to kind of echo what Linda is saying, I mean, we had this discussion, and that's one thing that I wanted to bring up, and we did bring up at the tail end of Thursday, I believe it was. You know, just trying to make sure that we are planning for the future, and having this drastic decline is great this year, but what are we going to see next year? What are we going to see the year after that, or, you know, and into the future? Now, the one thing that I will say is, seeing a drastic decline is going to be normal because we are getting rid of this mental health levy. The mental health levy is a drastic decrease, and that's a permanent decrease. That's not coming back. And so, you know, I kind of start looking at, you know, the trends as far as the general, the general, the general basic, the general supplemental, the rule. And then as far as capital goes, we are at $1 million worth of capital, which is a little, still a little bit less than usual. But again, with ARP, you know, we might be there. It's tough. We have a lot of things going on. We have a lot of moving parts with ARP, the loss of the mental health levy. You know, it's, are we positioning ourselves in a good position to move forward with the levies and making sure that the taxpayers aren't seeing these drastic changes moving forward? So, I mean, it's, it is going to be up to the board, whatever you guys want to do. I think we're, I think we're good now. We, you know, especially with ARP, you know, ARP in the long run is going to lower our levy, in my opinion. You know, we have, we have a lot of things that we're able to accomplish in the next three, three to four years with these ARP dollars that hopefully will continue to keep our levy rate low. But again, that's going to be, that's going to be up to this board, and we can, we can come up with discussions. I can come up with scenarios. We can, we can do whatever we need to do to make sure that everyone is comfortable where the levy's at right now. So, you know, right now, right now, publishing, publishing the general funds and the rural fund, we cannot increase and we cannot go above this. And so, once, once we kind of set it and hold that hearing, we're stuck at that to have the max. So having this discussion is absolutely appropriate for now and moving forward. So we can do, we can do whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
I think we're in an enviable position compared to other counties and cities because of all these moving parts that we have. Our reserves, the ARP funding, the prudence of the board in previous years, our debt service, the future of our debt service, our ability to borrow, our position to borrow at an incredibly reasonable rate. I just don't see drastic increases in our tax askings in the future. You know, I, we're probably positioned better than 98 other counties in the state. I could be wrong, but we're in the top five without a doubt. And it's been the hard work of many previous boards. It's been the work of this board. It's been the work of our employees. If we didn't have ARP funds, we have reserves we could have drawn from to address some of these capital improvements. Ryan, I agree with James that these ARP funds are going to have a positive impact upon our rate, not only now, today, this year, and this budget we're working on, but for years to come. So I'm fine with proceeding today as planned, because I've ran many scenarios through my head. I've woken up at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, wondering, what are we missing? But I just don't feel like we're missing anything and we're positioned well for the future.
Tom or Chris?
Yeah, I guess my other question for James is if we take mental levy, mental health levy out of the factor, what is, what is the overall reduction this year in the rate?
Well, if we were to take out the entire mental health levy, we would actually be increasing by about $600,000. Now, a lot, I mean, almost all of the increases that we have are salary and benefits. And then that coupled with the loss of revenue that we have, you know, we're a little bit tied for the salary and benefits because a lot of it's coming out of the bargaining unit. But if we were to take that out, we would be seeing roughly about an increase of about $600,000. Now, the debt service that we have is currently falling by about $600,000, and so that's, that's actually offsetting quite a bit, quite a bit of the loss of revenue and the increase in salary and benefits. So we are increasing, we are increasing for the general basic and the general supplemental as well as the, as well as the rural, but that is being offset by the reduction in the mental health levy as well as debt service.
I guess I look at it, given, given that that's the case, that if the mental health levy was still in place, we actually would be seeing a small increase this year overall. Then I'm comfortable moving forward because we really should look at, the taxpayers should expect that decrease to happen because they're going to get taxed for it by the state now. And hopefully, you know, we're all fingers crossed that the state delivers on this. I know we don't really think that they will do a very good job, but so I guess I'm comfortable moving forward. But I do appreciate the concerns that I've been raised though, too.
Tom?
Yeah, I think that's a good point by Chris. The current legislation that we have going on up there, the legislators, they continue to dump back onto the counties and the cities, put more financial burden on there. And I don't have any crystal balls, so I can't sit here and tell the public that everything's going to be rosy next year or the year after, the year after. Next year could be a complete disaster. It all depends on what they do up there at the state. So I think we got to look at it a year at a time. And I agree with Chris. The taxpayers, even though it came, the mental health have dropped in ours, they're paying for it anyway. So I think there's far enough to know that there would be a little increase if that didn't happen, but it did. So again, I don't have a crystal ball, so I'm not going to sit here and try to say we're in good shape next year and the years to come because I don't know.
No, and I thank you all for your opinions and thoughts on this. I think as I had the discussion with James, I wasn't sure the different scenarios we would look at, even be able to look at, were going to make a significant difference. I just wondered if we shouldn't take a look at those before going forward, just to see if there was something we could do for that. But no, I appreciate everyone's thoughts on that.
My worry is on the mental health with the state taking over, and we're on the cutting edge here in Blackhawk County and the other counties that are involved with us. And I see some of those services probably going by the wayside, and which is unfortunate because there's people out there that need these services, and some of them aren't able to get it unless they drive 150, 200 miles, and that's not good either.
And I think that's where we'll have to look at, maybe us increasing funds for those services that maybe get omitted. So, no. So, thank you. I just wanted to raise the point. I'm still, yeah.
Good points.
Yep.
Could I just add one more?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. When, I just want to caution about looking at the tax rate as opposed to the overall effect of all the factors that are involved. Now, in this case, the valuation didn't increase a huge amount, so that did not cause the tax rate to drop a whole lot. It was mostly because of the mental health levy. But a lot of times, that rate can fluctuate because of changes in the valuation, and it's probably more useful to look at something like what James presented last week that shows the effect on different classes of property. And you saw a decrease in nearly all classes of property, so that's an indication that, you know, the point that you made is valid. But sometimes, when it's due to changes in the valuation or the rollback, then the tax rate is not always a good indicator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you, Grant. And I didn't want to cause any delays in the hearings unless we had to, so that was, I had that discussion with James also.
I do just want to remind everyone, and Chris had mentioned this on Thursday, I believe, but, you know, when we publish the rate increases, we are publishing a dollar percentage increase, which is the tax askings increase, and we are only able to do that for two funds. So it's a little bit unfortunate because it appears that we are increasing our, our tax askings by quite a bit, but overall, that's not going to be the case. And so I do just want to read these off real quick as they are going to be published. And I would like the public to know that that's not necessarily going to be the case. So we are looking at the general services, for the general fund, we're looking at a 4.45% increase in tax askings. And in the rural, we are looking at a 5.12% increase in tax askings. Now, again, if you were to incorporate the mental health levy as well as the drop in debt service, you know, the urban, the urban tax askings are actually decreasing by 8.86%. So it's, it's just- So, it's, it's just something, a nice little reminder for the public that, you know, these are only two funds that make up the, the tax rate. So, I just thought that would be helpful.
Thank you, James. Anything else? Hearing, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is discussion, possible board action. Identify where the record public purposes that could be served by agencies, including but not limited to nonprofit entities. James, you want to take that?
I'll actually, I'll actually hand it off to Mike.
All right. It's a handoff.
All right. So, remember last week Supervisor Trowka brought up that we, he had a proposed set of potential public purposes that the board could identify that the county wishes to serve through whoever could serve it if we find somebody sufficient that could use our funds to serve those purposes. Bottom line is, we've got to identify the purposes first. They have to be in writing, so there should be some kind of board action to do that following discussion. When I sent out my email about it, I included a number of possible ones. Those were just some brainstorming to kind of get the, get the pot stirring, I guess, if you will. But it's up to the board and we need to identify those and how we want to put those down before we go and ask whether we are going to try to renew funding for the nonprofits that we had previously approved funding for in fiscal '22. So, with that, it's up to the board.
Well, Mr. Trowka obviously had those five. And I said, and the list, you'd come up with a list of about 15 or so additional or maybe inclusive of that, that were the same. And I think you had done a little research on all of those, that they tend to fill out the public purpose need. Whether or not this board wants to support all of those or some of those, or how we go forward with that, I'm not sure. But I did like the list that you provided to all of us. One of the questions I had, and I wondered if it would be good to answer for the public, was what is public purpose or what is the definition of that? And, and for me, it was like an action or direction taken by Blackhawk County supervisors, obviously, that benefits the residents of Blackhawk County as a whole, being a little, you know, specific in that. And then those being examples that you provided. I don't know if there's a different definition or something that.
I think that's a pretty good definition. The bottom line is it's got to serve some purpose that benefits the citizens here in one way or another. And it can be any number of types of relief. It can be to address certain problems. It can be to address health issues, hunger issues, and so on and so forth. And I, I think to respond to one of your points just a little bit ago, Supervisor Leyland, Mr. Trowka's list, I think probably, he had five categories, if I remember correctly. And I believe that those five categories included most of what I listed, probably not all of it. But I think there's a lot, there was a lot of overlap there.
Yeah, that, I agree. Those five look like they almost came from this list, so that was good.
And I think that that's a good place to start from unless somebody else has something to start from.
Well, and when we were talking about it, was these were examples of public purposes that could but need not be limited to those.
Exactly.
So, at some point in time, if we wanted to amend that, to say, oops, this is one we missed or would like to include, we would amend that later.
Yes, I see no reason we can't identify or, or for that matter, if, if the board would want to, you can remove things from, from a list of public services that the board wants to address as well.
Well, from that list, and I'm just speaking again, but I was going to say there were items that you had listed, obviously, energy being one, business climate being one, because to me, that was maybe economic development, I think that was listed. But employment opportunities. And I thought from a public standpoint, we'd have to be pretty clear about what those items meant so that we don't have everybody and anybody applying for something related to business climate or energy or whatever. I don't know. Those are just my thoughts. That wasn't specific enough maybe for us, but that's whatever everybody else wants to do. What do you guys want to do with it? You like the list?
By the way, for the record, the reason that I, that I thought of those things in part was because of the economic development, but it was also in part because I know that there were organizations that helped with job training and career advancement opportunities.
And we listed those.
Didn't mean to interrupt there.
No, no, but I thought we had job training listed and basic skills training in many of those. I don't know if we were prepared to talk about all of those today, but I just thought there were some great items on there, but I just wondered if we needed more clarification on a couple of them. But I'm fine for more discussion.
Yeah, the five that I wrote down, I thought it was pretty, I just felt like it covered a lot of bases.
Yeah.
Pretty inclusive.
Five very general ones and ones that we've funded in the past, I think for the same reason that we felt they were meeting public purpose services, so.
I was just looking at my notes again, and yeah, I, I think we covered a lot of ground.
And if it would be the board's preference, you could take those five, approve them. Now, I will say this, I, I don't have them in front of me written down, but the three organizations that were concerned about potentially renewing funding for in 2022, they would definitely fall within those five.
Right.
Yeah, for sure.
I would say I liked the list of five that Supervisor Trowka came up with, but I, but I think I even more like this more detailed list that Mr. Trinan developed for us. I think it helps guide a little more what those possible people applying, would be applying for. And just because we've got something on the list here doesn't mean we fund something in all those areas every year. And also, as I look at this list, I think this kind of helps us guide. I would see us using the same kind of principles as when we're soliciting proposals or accepting proposals for public use of ARP money as well.
So, we could adopt, oh, I guess I'm thinking we could do this for further discussion later, really kind of adopt the list as is, but for future discussion or future decisions on adding or subtracting or any more clarifying with that?
Absolutely. You could adopt either list at this point. Either one's going to include the three that we're going to be discussing, potentially sending an inquiry to right now from our fiscal '22 approvals. And then, yeah, things can be changed in the future. That's right.
But if we adopted Attorney Trinan's list, it might be less work for us to do in the future.
I think so, too.
I will make that motion.
To adopt the shorter list for now?
No, the longer.
Oh, the longer one, okay.
You want to second that?
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion?
Yes, I don't have that list. Do you want to do?
Yeah, yeah, we can give it to you.
Mr. Trinan will provide you with that.
I, I can provide you with the list.
Yeah, I was going to say mine's written.
Thanks for your work on that, Mike.
You bet.
Yeah, thanks. Wasn't so easy.
And for the public, you want someone to read it off? I have it in front of me.
Oh, you do have it?
Oh, I can give it to Grant. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sure. Do that.
Yeah, I'll read it off. It's stable and secure housing, including but not limited to legal services, rent assistance and mortgage assistance, heating and other utilities, nutrition and hunger, health and healthcare, including mental health, shelter and heat when housing is unavailable, education, job training, basic skills training, special needs training and assistance, poverty and providing basic necessities, financial management and debt relief, relief from domestic violence, domestic assault, sexual abuse and assaults, including but not limited to safe shelter and legal services, childcare, energy, conservation and preservation of natural resources, environmental protection, business climate, employment opportunities, economic vitality, crisis prevention and assistance, violence prevention and assistance for victims, and equal opportunity and combating discrimination.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So, I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second on the floor.
Oh, Chris seconded, I think. We don't need a second. Chris did.
Any further discussion?
I have, is it?
Tom?
Is it important not to duplicate services? Because some of the stuff that's listed on that list, we currently finance through community services roughly $84,000, which is rent, heat, and water assistance through three different agencies for the last, what, 10, 15 years? So, I don't know. I think it may be important that we don't duplicate services.
I think, yeah, to me, that's something we'd be considering, I guess, when they apply.
I would look at each.
Yeah, that they wouldn't be. No, you're, good point, Tom.
Barb, did you have, want to say something? Grant, Barb Grant?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you know, the guidelines per county are, are quite low and sometimes a little bit of assistance can, can avert a significant crisis for a family. And so, you know, I, in those unusual situations where, you know, you've got somebody who's over county guidelines, but a little bit of assistance could keep them, for example, in their home and prevent them from getting, becoming homeless, is important. So, as you look at that, that might be something to consider.
Thank you, Barb. Barb, Fraser?
Thank you. Thank you for categorizing these. I really appreciate that. The one question that I would ask you to consider, and I don't need an answer today, is if you keep rent utilities and water still separate and under community services, you consider putting food under county community services again, as it was prior to landfill dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike, I just had a question. And it's because of the motion we have listed there, could be served by agencies, including but not limited to nonprofits. And I know we've had a little discussion on that before, but I just thought for clarification on that, because I see most of these being nonprofits that we're probably would be dealing with, but.
They, they certainly could mostly be nonprofits, but the question before the board, if there's an agency making a pitch for funding to assist in serving one or more identified public purposes, is who's going to best serve it? If it's a for-profit, it makes more sense to go with a for-profit. If it's a nonprofit, it makes more sense to go for nonprofit. But our direction from the state auditor is that we can't play favorites, one versus another.
And that's where my concern came in, because reading that directive, it had mentioned that the opinion further states, even if the function is a private nonprofit corporation, it has to still fit that public purpose regardless of that being a charity. But it also says while donations to a private entity are not allowable. So, to me, that was a, maybe not the same message, that if it's not allowable to a private, even if they are serving some kind of a charitable cause.
I, I think the key word here is donation. We aren't to make donations one way or the other. What we're supposed to be doing is any, any dollars we spend are supposed to be going to a service that serves a public purpose.
And that was as the contract agreement.
Yep, exactly. And we're going to have contracts for those in the event that any, any dollars are approved for any of these.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Do you want to roll call vote on this?
I think it's best to do it as a resolution.
Roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Trowka?
Yes.
That is adopted. Moving on to motion to ascend inquiry to the following agencies as to ways these agencies serve Blackhawk County's identified public services. Riverview Center, Cedar Valley Food Pantry, and Iowa Legal Aid.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Mike, do you want to address a little bit of how this is going to proceed, I guess, for everybody?
You bet. So, here's what, here's what we would do if this motion is, is ultimately passed. We will send a letter to each of these three organizations to have them respond as to what on our list of approved public purposes they would be serving and how. That way, we know whether we have a basis on which to enter into a contract to renew the funding that was previously approved for fiscal '22 for these organizations.
Should that be done, should that be done first, Mike?
Well, what I want to do, or what I think needs to be done first, is we need to ask them to identify the services they're going to provide. And then, we can take a look at that to determine whether they fit our public purposes. So, so the first thing we need to do, now that we've approved the, the public purposes that, or now that we've identified and approved a list of public purposes, is we need to ask them, well, what are you doing with the funds that we'd provide and see how that fits within our list of public purposes? Then the final step would be to, if ultimately approved by this board, to enter into a contract with those organizations. I hope that answers your question.
And you have looked at or identified or written in a contract agreement that they would need to submit or be a part of, so.
Yep, we have, we have form contracts that, that we've had as examples. We would enter in, or we would create each of these contracts individually, however, in the event that they would be approved. First, we need to hear back.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the 905 hearing on proposed ordinance number 77-262, the Becker Rezone. It is now 9:45.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication of notice of public.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to waive the first reading as published, as was published on January 12th, 2022 in the Waterloo Courier in accordance with the requirements.
Oh, that's not, oh, oops.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
We'll just do it without it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, just go on, yeah, just stop.
I'll make a motion to close the public, close the hearing as oral written comments were received and placed on file.
Second.
Moved and seconded. You're up.
Okay, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission, at its regular meeting on December 21st, 2021, reviewed the request by Mark Becker to rezone 1.5 acres from a agricultural district to a agriculture residential district in order to construct one new single-family home, which is adjacent to Ansboro Avenue and West Washburn Run intersection. Yeah, the request to rezone 1.5 acres from a agricultural district to a agriculture residential district to build one new single-family home at 6925 Ansboro Avenue. It's moved by Bojor and seconded by Scherr's to rezone 1.5 acres from agricultural district to agriculture residential district in order to build one new single-family home at 6925 Ansboro Avenue. The request was approved three to one with AG voting against due to ground being prime farmland. The one parcel containing the 1.5 acres for the proposed rezonary has been zoned a agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1982. Surrounding area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and a zone to agricultural district to the north, south, and east. Land of the west is owned agricultural district and they are agriculture residential district. The rezonary is designated as agricultural in the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which designates agricultural to the north, south, east, and west. None of the areas located within a special flood hazard area. The site did have a high, did have a 100 land evaluation score, 261, indicating higher agricultural value. The applicant wishes to rezone 1.5 acres from eight AR in order to construct a new single-family home. Parcel's large enough to accommodate one develop a lot that will meet the lot size requirements for the AR agricultural residential district by being larger than 1.5 acres in size. The property has a lease score of 261, which is considered a high-value agricultural site. Zoning ordinance notes that the land is classified as having high agricultural value, should be strongly discouraged for development almost in every case. It also states that in general, these sites are reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban use encroachment. However, the ordinance also states that under area unique circumstances are these sites to be developed and only after compelling evidence is provided. Zoning ordinance does list several criteria that should be considered unique and compelling evidence. The first is the area is not an active crop production and as in CRP for the previous 15 years, area is not conducive to the production, reason of parcel size or shape, area is compatible with surrounding uses by similar uses, meaning any one of these criteria should not constitute approval. However, as each request will be reviewed and based on its own circumstances. The land is pasture, has, is not suitable farming due to previous structures that were burned and buried there on site. The technical review committee did note the high lease score for the, for the proposal.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Becker going to speak. You have anything to say? Did he cover it?
Well, first off, um, an interesting meeting. Appreciate the moment of silence, the pledge of allegiance. That was pretty refreshing, by the way, and the sheriff's report was interesting, too. Um, yeah, we moved in Waterloo area, um, and, uh, we bought that piece of property from Blaine Miller and, um, built our house there. I purposely did not build on the acre and a half for a couple reasons. One, there is, there's a lot of buried stuff over there, so I don't know what I want to run into. And, uh, you know, everybody has a dream and, and, uh, my boy's come to the place now that, uh, he's interested in building beside dad and, you know, we got our shop there. We're working together and it'd just be nice and convenient and, and it probably would, you know, draw a few more taxes for the county. Which might be helpful, so, um, I guess that's about all I have to really say, except.
Any questions?
Oh, I was going to say, and it was pasture or something right now, right?
Yeah.
It wasn't really, hadn't been farmed.
Yeah, yeah, it was, uh, 3.78 acres total, you know, because there was that farm and, and farmhouse and barn there. And, uh, like I said, there's a, there's a fire there and then, um, they tore, tore it all down and buried it there. And when we built our house, uh, they went ahead and buried the rest of the materials over there, too. So I don't know what all we're going to run into, but it, whatever it is, it'll be worth it, of course, if you can have your family there.
Oh, for sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Becker.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to, there's been zero opposition. Zero issues, nobody from the public has.
All right, sounds good. I have a motion on the floor to close the hearing after all written comments are received. Any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
The public motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is the resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board of supervisors consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an ordinance adoption, that the ordinance, amendment, ordinance number 36 is amended. The Blackhawk County Agricultural Cultural Preservation Zoning Order.
Second.
Somebody motioned.
77-262, it will be known as. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, county preparedness and possible updates to COVID-19. Nafisa, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, good, um, Nafisa, good morning, Blackhawk County Public Health. Um, so as of, um, January 18th, um, we've had 774 cases of, um, COVID-19. Um, so our percent positivity presently is 42.3%. Um, we don't have, um, vaccination data yet, um, because of, um, yesterday was the holiday day, so I'll update you on that, um, on, um, next week, Tuesday, and or I can send a email as well. But our percent positivity keeps going up, so, and we encourage everybody to stay safe and also, um, get vaccinated if you're not.
Are we still doing vaccines, uh, out in the public, Nafisa?
Yes, vaccines are available. Vaccines are available.
Any questions for Nafisa? Hearing done, thank you, Nafisa.
Thank you.
Any reports or information from the board? I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Wait, oh, I was going to say one person.